The special meeting of the Aurora City Council for November 12th, 2025 is hereby called to order at 4:30 PM. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Here.
Alderman Nunez.
Apologies, here.
Oh, Alderman Masiacos is absent. Alderman Nunez is here.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Benuellos.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug. Alderwoman Bede. Alderman Larson.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Mayor Lash is present.
There is a need for a special vote to allow participation remotely by one of our members. Alderman Bug requests permission to participate remotely per Section 2-80, based on a reasonable anticipation of an extended illness. Is there a motion to allow Alderman Bug to participate remotely? Motion was made by Alderman Seville, seconded by Alderwoman Garza. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries by voice vote, and we will allow Alderman Bug to participate remotely, and the clerk will recognize that he has joined the meeting once we see his face. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of a sergeant-at-arms for this meeting?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderman Seville. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries by voice vote. Tonight, I'll lead the pledge of allegiance. If you want to stand and... I ask the communications team to not hold off on a mayor's report, but I did just want to thank all the aldermen who came out to march in the Veterans Day parade, as well as all the members of the public and our staff for being here on a holiday. We had a little bit light turnout, but a lot of enthusiasm and a wonderful ceremony here in the council chambers because of the cold temperatures outside. The only other thing that I wanted to make the council aware of is that we've had ongoing discussions with ACA about their funding, and we've reached an agreement. And the council will be getting a memo shortly, once we work on language between the two of us, as we continue through the budget process and continue to have success negotiating some of the final elements in the minutes leading up to having a proposed budget. That concludes the mayor's report. Before we enter into public comment, I know there's a number of people who signed up to speak. Again, if you sign up to speak and are available, just recognize that our equipment's not working, so you won't see the ticker up there on the podium, but we will let you know when your three minutes has expired, and as well if you feel like another speaker has made your points, or you can make yours in less than three minutes. That'll help the council move along in our deliberation, so you can hopefully see a vote tonight on the item that many of you have come to be part of. With that, I'll ask the clerk if we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment.
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you please read the rules of public comment?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city councils shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will you please read the name of the first person wishing to offer public comment?
Nadia Kuhnhae.
Feel free to step up and adjust the microphone accordingly. Welcome, Ms. Kuhnhae. You have three minutes beginning now.
Good afternoon. Personally, I do believe that, as a council, you do want to pass this resolution. I know not everyone shares that sentiment, but I'm going to give you the benefit of the doubt that you do want to help pass this. As we know, migration is a natural, it's been going on since the beginning of time, and this isn't just a Latino issue. This involves all immigrants and their allies. When people see me, I've been asked if I'm Native American, Polynesian, of Indian heritage, Mexican or Latinee, you know, so I could be any of those, and I am one of them, but not all of them. But this topic is wide-ranging. And one of the issues that you've been having is wording and trying to get this right. And I just want to suggest that the council and law enforcement and staff here at the city get trained in the Illinois Trust Act and HB 1312, which will be signed into law soon. With this training, and I'm sure law enforcement has some awareness of the Illinois Trust Act, you would better understand that there are already procedures in place for reporting and how to interact, and, you know, what our responsibilities are as citizens of this city. So I just wanted to put that bug in your ear. I hope you will be open to this type of training, and then we will all have a better understanding of, you know, how we can all work together with the issues that we're having today. And when I say "today," as many of you know, I do mean "today." And I also want to say, we appreciate those of you who are out in the community with us doing the patrolling, and we know who you are, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kuhnhae. The clerk, please read the name of the next two people wishing to offer public comment. The next person can step up to one podium, and the other person can get in the bullpen.
Rick Lawrence and Tabitha Caspila.
I came in front of you as somebody that has several friends that are at risk of, you know, being deported if they were ever, you know, caught up in this. Some very successful, some been here for a long time, worked very hard, with some of them trying to solve that issue, and found that that was an issue that is not solvable for some of them. That'd be very sad. So I'm not here to speak against this ordinance. What I'm a little upset about is the lack of honesty and transparency to the general public. It's being sold as that once you pass this thing, tomorrow's a different day. This thing passes, fine, great, nothing's going to change. There is no safe spaces. There is no, can't go in City Hall without a warrant. If immigration wanted to come in here right now, they can. It's a political move. And people in different situations, whether it be the Palestinians, whether it be climate change, whatever, people like John's group and everything use different people for their own political benefits. So today, you're the political advertisement. Don't allow yourself to be used by political people. Our police are good people. This ordinance isn't going to change, this ordinance is not going to change anything that our police can or cannot do. And you know how I know that people like John are not interested in solving problems? Two opportunities the mayor had to set up meetings with officials from ICE, to open up communications, to start to talk. In case there's an issue, in case you want to raise an issue, in case you want to talk. He rejected both of those times. Said it not worth it. The community's not interested in talking. Well, you got to talk to people. And if the mayor's not willing to open up communications with the officials of immigration, that he can communicate when there's an issue, that tells you a lot about actually trying to solve a problem. So, you know, God bless the ordinance and everything else, but for anybody to portray that anything is different tomorrow, it's not. And if you think they're going to report something to the state of Illinois, and a state of Illinois someday down the road is going to do something, whatever that issue of today will be long over by the time the state of Illinois does anything. So, you know, just don't put yourself in a position that politicians exploit the issues and exploit the people. And don't put yourself in positions where you get yourself in trouble or get yourself hurt. Don't allow people to fire you up and then cause yourself to get into situations.
Mr. Lawrence, your three minutes is up. Thank you for your comments. I'll ask clerk to read the next person.
Tabitha Caspila, and then Jenny Golden.
Ms. Caspila, you have three minutes beginning now.
Before I say anything else, I just want to comment on the previous gentleman's speech. Why do any innovation, then, if that's the case? If nothing ever is going to change, why try? Why bother? Baffling. But back to this. What does a city look like when people are afraid to open their front doors? Because that's where we are right now, as a community. Parents hesitate to drive their kids to school. Workers avoid reporting wage theft or unsafe conditions because one phone call could change their lives. Children freeze at the sight of flashing lights, not because they did anything wrong, but because they know what that could mean for a family that looks like them. That's not safety. That's a shadow that follows people throughout their everyday lives. And I've seen that shadow here in Aurora time and time again, not just in immigrant families, but in teachers, business owners, and neighbors who don't know what to say or do when they see ICE vehicles near our schools, in our neighborhoods, and in our apartment complexes. We all feel that tension in the air, just nobody ever speaks on it. And the truth is, our city needs to build trust with its residents. Our trust has been shaken. When people don't know where their city stands, they assume the worst, and this ordinance is a chance to repair that relationship. This ICE-free zone ordinance gives us a way forward, and it tells our community one simple necessary truth. Our city will not assist in breaking their families apart, not with our police, not with our resources, and not with our silence. Because when people trust their local government, they stop hiding. And when one group lives in fear, the whole city has to carry that weight. This ordinance is about protecting every person in Aurora. It's about children who shouldn't have to learn the language of fear, or parents who deserve to go to work and come home the same day. It's about a city that chooses compassion as courage, not compliance as comfort. Leadership isn't about avoiding controversy. Leadership is about standing on the side of humanity, even when it's not easy. So tonight, I'm asking you, all of you, as a mother, as a neighbor, as a resident of Aurora, a city that I love, a city I'm raising my children in, my family, please pass this ordinance, vote yes, and show the city of Aurora that you stand with us.
Your three minutes is up. Thank you. I'll ask the clerk to please call the name of the next person wishing to offer public comment, and then stand back.
Jenny Golden and Jesse Miller.
Ms. Golden, you have three minutes beginning now.
Hi, I had something totally different planned tonight, so I'm kind of just letting words roll off my tongue. But I do want to say, I'm really frustrated with what seems to be a really long game of hot potato with an ordinance. It's been going on for a little while. But I'm a white woman, as you can see, and I was barricaded by 10 ICE agents with weapons drawn, okay, and completely unexpected, completely undeserved. But if I am a white woman, and they are drawing weapons and banging on my windows, trying to break my windows, and threatening physical harm, imagine what they're doing to the Hispanic-Latino communities, and how hard we need to fight so they can leave their homes, like I leave my home, so they can go grocery shopping, so they can go and do laundry without the fear of being dehumanized and brutalized by ICE agents. This is the second-largest city in Illinois, I believe, and the population is just overwhelmingly so amazing, and we have to do everything that we can to protect what makes this city great, and that's the Hispanic-Latino population. So I ask so deeply for y'all to pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Golden. Will the clerk please read the name of the next two people wishing to offer public comment?
Jesse Miller and Isabel Navarro.
Ms. Miller, you have three minutes beginning now.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today. So I actually only recently moved to Aurora a few months ago, so I don't know my ward or anything. If anyone wants to double-check my information later, you can. But I actually moved here for a teaching job. And as an educator, I have seen the very, very real effects that ICE's presence has had in my classroom. On days that the city of Aurora has had heavy ICE presence, I have seen a stark drop in attendance. I have had students who have told me that they are staying home, not even necessarily because they are undocumented themselves, but because they are caring for loved ones who are undocumented and who are so terrified to even step out their front door. But the thing is that this issue doesn't even only affect just my students or, you know, neighbors who are undocumented, or even the ones that come from mixed-status families. It also affects my students who are citizens. My students who are citizens are also terrified of the targeting and the racial profiling of Latino residents that ICE has been engaging in. Racial profiling that has been made legal by the United States Supreme Court. Forty-two percent of Aurora residents identify as Hispanic or Latino, which means that forty-two percent of your residents live in fear. While many claim that ICE are here to deport dangerous criminals, this is often not the case. According to ICE's own numbers, the largest group of people who are currently detained are people without criminal records. And I don't know about you all, but this personally makes me wonder if ICE's intentions are pure and true. Throughout the city of Chicago, as well as the suburbs, ICE has used rubber bullets and tear gas on community members. They have arrested government representatives, and they have even arrested U.S. citizens. In the city of Aurora alone, ICE has been known to bodily drag people out of their cars, leaving cars running in the middle of the streets. I know this is an issue that the Aurora Police Department has been dealing with. And it makes me wonder if their true intention is to break up families and to terrorize communities instead. And for those of you who might not know, crossing the border without a visa wasn't actually always illegal. And even when it was in the beginning, it really was just a slap on the wrist. However, since the '80s and '90s, we have heavily punished and penalized people for seeking a better life. So this last part is for council members who have not yet decided to vote yes on this ordinance. I urge you to restore dignity and safety to your great city. I've only been here for a few months. I am originally from the city of Chicago, but I know that this city is just as great as the city of Big Shoulders. I ask you to approve this ordinance and stop ICE from terrorizing and targeting your community members, your loved ones, your friends. And I have a feeling that not a single person who sits up here today wants to break up innocent families. And so if that's the case, I urge you to support this ordinance, because it won't only improve the safety of our undocumented neighbors and friends, it will also improve safety for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Your three minutes has expired. Really quick, I just want the record to reflect that Alderman Bug has joined the meeting via Zoom, and I'll ask the clerk to please read the name of the next two people wishing to offer public comment.
Isabel Navarro, anonymous Aurora resident, and then Kimberly Orala.
Ms. Navarro, you have three minutes beginning now.
Many people have already stood here in the past several weeks and made really compelling arguments as to why they support this ordinance and why you should pass it. I'm here to remind you of the implications of delaying this any further and the precedent you should be setting by passing this. We have all seen the news articles. We have all seen the videos. Just over the weekend, we saw an ICE agent who was arrested for DUI last month after leaving his shift at the Broadview Detention Facility. We also saw a video of a man in Chicago driving in one direction, ICE vehicle in the other direction, throw tear gas in his vehicle as his one-year-old daughter was in the backseat. They tear-gassed a child in a car. The woman in Chicago who was shot five times by an ICE agent, he bragged about it in a group chat to other agents, lied about the incident, was then rebuked by body cam footage. He has a warrant out for his arrest and is facing up to 20 years in prison. I could go on and on, but I only have three minutes. My point is that these agents are completely untrained. They are undisciplined. They have no regard for public safety and no regard for your local law enforcement. The President of the United States, who is completely unhinged, to put it politely, is on TV telling them that they have immunity, that they are above the law. They are not. This is a country of checks and balances. You are a check. You are a balance. You are the last line of governmental defense the people of Aurora have. If there was ever a time for you to step up and to show true leadership and do something meaningful, that time is now. Because the lacking sense of urgency we have seen in regard to this matter has been truly disappointing. And I'm not going to stand here and pretend I understand all the intricacies and procedures of local government, because I don't. But at this point, we don't care. We shouldn't have to leave work early and rush to get here and stand here and plead for you to pass this ordinance. You chose this. You chose to become public servants, so serve. Because this ordinance is not enough. This is the bare minimum. Pass this already and move on to the next thing that you're going to do, to protect yourselves and to protect your city from this egregious overreach and abuse of federal and executive power. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. I'll ask the clerk to... I'll ask the clerk to please read the name of the next two people wishing off for public comment.
Anana, Aurora resident, Kimberly Orala, and then Amy Massaro.
Okay, so Kimberly, you can step up, and Anonymous, you have three minutes, beginning now.
Good news is, is I don't always come to complain. I actually want to give you credit where credit is due, and I want to say thank you for recently resurfacing my entire subdivision. It's nice, they did a great job. Now, moving on to the other part. On the other hand, it's very simple. You either choose to do the right thing and be on the right side of history, or you go down in flames with your legacy of being a betrayal to your community for which you were elected, and to also betray your own people by some already on this committee. Now, in your life, you have an opportunity to prove that you can and will stand up for something important and pass this to limit ICE activity in Aurora. Please, for the love of God, pass Alderman Larson's full amendment. Have some teeth in it. Don't wimp out, don't water it down, don't put maybe and that kind of stuff. They need to check badges, they need to have body cameras, they need to do things that are going to protect the residents of the city. And APD must be doing their jobs. They need to do more and protect Aurora residents who pay their salaries. Anything other than supporting a ban on ICE is just solidifying the fact that there are people in APD who clearly harbor racist bigotry and belong in their ranks who believe that ICE is doing the right thing. If that's the case, then those officers all the way to the top in APD need to vacate those positions. So please pass a full ban on the amendment today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anonymous. I'll ask the clerk to please read the name of the next two people wishing off for public comment.
Kimberly Orala, and then Amy Massaro.
Welcome, Ms. Massaro. Ms. Orala, you have three minutes, beginning now.
I had an experience today, myself, with ICE. I was on my way to work, and we saw patrol cars on the side of the road, and immediately our instinct, my boyfriend and I, was to get out and help, because in moments like that, you think you're prepared. I've told myself, I know exactly what I'm going to do, exactly what I'm going to say, but in that moment, all I saw was a mother, a friend, a neighbor. I didn't have to know her to want to stand up for her. I did what most people would do, recorded, I tried to spread the word to the community. And I felt useless, and I felt scared, and I am a citizen, but it doesn't matter, because the fear doesn't disappear. Everybody has somebody that they are afraid for, and this is getting outrageous. I work at a food pantry where we have had multiple ICE sightings in the area, and people are afraid to go get their food. People are choosing to starve because they are afraid, and if that doesn't baffle you, it's concerning. And watching the attendance go down and down, and having to call people and let them know that they're in the area is just terrifying. These people have kids, it doesn't matter, they're someone, and you should care, because these are residents of the city. And these are people that I may never meet, but I care about, because I live here, and I've lived here most of my life, and I have family here. And everything that's going on is putting a very, very heavy shadow over the city, and I think that we need to start waking up and realizing that these events are not, they're not like alone, they're spreading. It's happening everywhere, but we can do something now. We can make a change now. And we have the opportunity to do so, and you've had people here urging you to do so. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask the clerk to please read the name of the next two people wishing off for public comment.
Amy Massaro and Jocelyn Hernandez.
Ms. Hernandez, feel free to step up here, and Ms. Massaro, please, you have three minutes, beginning now.
Thank you for having me this evening. I had not planned to speak today, because I do have full faith that you guys are going to pass this at the bare minimum today. I hope so anyways. But I felt compelled, after what I experienced this morning. A mother was abducted on Sullivan and Randall Road, driving home from dropping off her child at school and running some errands, as us all parents do. I don't know the status of her, but I can tell you, from talking with her family, she has no criminal record. Her license was totally, you know, everything, her registration, I seen it for myself, everything was good. She was blocks from her home. Her car was left on the side of the road with groceries in it, unlocked, cars in it, or, you know, keys in it. Anything could have happened. Thankfully, family and everything was able to be located quickly and got the car home safely, instead of being subjected to possibly being towed, fines, all those things we know that can happen. Being involved in rapid response, we care for and give resources to the families affected. And today, it was two sons. One, a local college freshman, and the other still in high school, and their father as well. He was still at work. I had to sit there with a barely, barely grown adult, barely, just trying to go to college. He had to leave his classes, tears rolling down his face, because he just wants his mom. And I don't care how old you ever get, when someone cries out for their mom, all moms And of course, his brother found out through social media before, you know, the minor, before his brother, family members could even tell him. So of course, he wanted to leave school. He couldn't concentrate for the rest of the day. Thankfully, family members were in the area, they were able to go, you know, take care of them. We're setting up resources the way that we do. I just, I'm here to remind you that this is ongoing with no end in sight. It is causing so much grief, and I can't even put it into words right now, because I'm still quite shaken up myself. Because ICE was waiting just the street down, watching us, seeing who was going to pick up the car. They were waiting for maybe her husband, family members to come pick up the car. And once they realized we were on to them, they did take off like a bad hell, because, you know, we weren't going to let that slide. And I'm never going to forget this. And that's why I'm here, because I am not going to let you guys forget this either.
Thank you, Ms. Massaro. Your three minutes is up.
Thank you.
I'll ask the clerk to please read the name of the next two people wishing off for public comment.
Jocelyn Hernandez, Natalie Wakala.
Ms. Hernandez, you have three minutes, beginning now.
The fear that is going on in our community is heartbreaking. Even those of us who are citizens have to be afraid. Because though ICE claims that they are restoring order and going after criminals, we know that based on the color of our skin, the job that we do, or the language that we speak, we may be brutalized. We know that ICE is foaming at the mouth to tear gas our community, to beat our community, to spray us with rubber bullets, to pepper spray our children in their cars. We know that we are all at risk. And no matter how small or big a measure is, I believe we all have a civic duty to oppose authoritarian and violent entities in this government. And I hope the city will stay true to that and do more, put on more community events, teach people about their rights, advocate for our community, you know? And we talk about how ICE is disappearing people, but I don't think people realize what that means. When they disappear a person, that might mean that you are picked up right here in Aurora. But then they send you to Kentucky, so it's hard for your people to get to you, so it's hard for your attorney to get to you. And just when your attorney has localized, has found you, they moved you to New Mexico. So now you start again. And they do everything that they can to put up roadblocks. So when we say that they disappear people, that's what we mean. They mean that they take people, they abduct people, and move you around over and over again to make it difficult or impossible to get proper legal representation. So when they talk about stopping crime, you know, I wonder, is that how we want to stop crime? Is that the legal system that we want all of us to be subject to? It's not what I want to be subject to, it's not what I want my community to be subject to. And so I do think we should pass this measure, and any other measure that anyone can think of to oppose ICE in any way we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. I'll ask the clerk to read the name of the next two people wishing off for public comment.
Natalie, and then Tom Ritchie, after that, Ruben Morales.
Thank you, Natalie. You have three minutes, beginning now.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. For years, our immigrant neighbors have lived under the constant shadow of fear. Fear that at any moment, a routine trip to work, school, or the grocery store could turn into a life-altering encounter with ICE. This isn't public safety, this is state-sanctioned terror that tears families apart, destabilizes our neighborhoods, and undermines the trust between residents and the very institutions meant to protect them. Public safety is not about punishment or surveillance, it's about ensuring that everyone, regardless of status, can exist without fear. When people are afraid to report crimes, seek medical care, or attend school because they worry about ICE, our entire community becomes less safe. True safety means belonging. The city of Aurora has an opportunity and an obligation to stand with its residents, not with federal agencies that profile, detain, and deport. We've seen this city rise up in moments of crisis, offering compassion and solidarity. So let's extend that same courage to now declaring ICE-free zones within Aurora, and ensuring that no city resources, facilities, or personnel are ever used to assist immigration enforcement. And I can't speak about state violence here without acknowledging the echoes we see in Gaza. The same machinery of dehumanization that allows families here to be torn apart by ICE is the same logic that allows bombs to fall on families abroad. Our solidarity must be borderless, because the struggle for dignity and safety is universal. When we say ICE out of Aurora, we are saying that no one should live in fear for existing. We're saying that ICE, that this city values life, freedom, and belonging over intimidation and profit. So I believe that this city that values people over profit and justice over fear should definitely pass this ordinance. As a member of the rapid-response team in Aurora as well, we have seen complete terror from ICE. It is unimaginably sad to witness the families that continue to be dehumanized by this entity of our federal government, and we need to do more to protect our fellow citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask the clerk to please read the name of the next two people wishing off for public comment.
Tom Ritchie, then Ruben Morales, then Jesse Olazaba.
All right.
Ritchie, you have three minutes, beginning now, and then we are out of 30 minutes time lock after this, but I'll let you make your comments.
All righty. Thank you for letting me speak. My name's Tom Ritchie, and I'm an organizer both with Casa DuPage and with the PSL in the West Suburbs. And it's in everybody's face now, you know? Nobody can ignore this. Everybody has seen the videos of the senseless brutal beatings. Everybody's seen the evidence that ICE is not only taking people who might have not 100% citizenship, but also people who are citizens and have been here for a considerable period of time. And for the second time, within the last five years that I can remember, the Chicagoland area is under consideration for investigation by the U.N. Human Rights Council for abuses by some kind of law enforcement. I mean, this is the historical turning point. There are no moderate positions now. We're considering ICE-free zones. This is important. We need to tell the community around us in Chicagoland that this is a municipality that's not going to put up with people being abducted, that's not going to be, not going to put up with families being torn apart from each other. Okay? And to anybody thinking that this is just a political move, and it won't change anything, and then it's just being done for political purposes, know that if you are a community that is considering this measure, you are on a side, because Boeing Broke voted it down. You know, this is a historical turning point where you can put yourself in a position to be seen, at the very least, seen as good. I mean, 50, 60 years from now, when your kids, your grandkids are going to be reading about this moment, what do they want to see you guys doing? Do you want them to see you as standing next to jackbooted thugs stealing your neighbors and tearing families apart? Or do you want them to look back at a history book and see you guys as the people that stood up and said, "No, we're going to be a part of a collective of municipalities in Chicagoland that's not going to put up with our neighbors being taken by ICE, that's not going to put up with an administration that steps on everybody's rights in this country. We're going to stand up for the working class in our community, we're going to stand up for people who feel defenseless and who are defenseless in a lot of situations, and we're going to keep them protected, we're going to keep them safe." That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. So this concludes the 30 minutes that we have designated to public comment. Alderman Larson.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules of public comment, to allow the remaining speakers to give their public comment.
Motion made by Alderman Larson, second by Alderman White. Okay, no discussion. For those who want to know, there are seven people left to make public comment. If there's no further discussion, there's a motion, a second. I'll ask the clerk to please call the rule. A yes vote is to extend the public comment to allow those seven people to speak. A no vote, we would carry on with the rest of the agenda.
Barrero.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Masiacos.
Yes.
Nunez.
Yes.
Franco.
No.
Seville.
Yes.
Benuelos.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bug.
We couldn't hear you, Alderman Bug. Can you hear us? How about raise one finger for yes and two fingers for no? Can you hear us, Alderman Bug?
Yes. He said yes.
He said yes. Clerk's ruled that he said yes.
Yes. All right. Alderman Larson.
Yes.
And White.
Yes.
Tanyas, one no.
Motion carries. We'll hear the remainder of the speakers wishing off for public comment. Will the clerk please read the name of the next two people wishing off for public comment? I'll ask the audience to just hold back on applause.
Ruben Morales and Jesse Olazaba.
Ms. Morales, you have three minutes, beginning now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council, and everybody here tonight. As you all know, my name is Ruben Morales. I stand representing our Community Watch Patrolers, volunteers, and neighbors who have been working day and night to keep Aurora informed, calm, and safe. As you all know, earlier this morning, ICE detained a woman here in Aurora. Our Patrolers rushed to the scene, made sure her family was supported, and helped return her vehicle safely. Not long after, we received reports of ICE driving through our neighborhoods. Instead of letting fear spread, our community organized. We coordinated through dispatch, tracked their movements, and alerted residents in real time. Working together, we were able to push ICE out of Aurora twice in one day. We later received a report that ICE agents had stepped, had stopped to eat at a restaurant here in the city. When our Patrolers arrived, they had just left. Aurora Police also showed up soon after. An officer approached me, asked my name, and said he remembered me from City Hall. He wasn't confrontational, but he was respectful. He took a moment to thank us and told me to stay safe. That small exchange might seem minor, but to us, it meant a lot. It showed that when we lead with communication and respect, we can stand side by side, community and police, with a shared goal of safety and dignity. That's what this ordinance represents tonight. It's not just policy, it's a bridge, a chance to build understanding, to protect families, and to prove that safety and compassion can coexist in the same city. Today, Aurora showed that what unity looks like in real time. As you cast your votes, I hope you remember that what happened today wasn't about confrontation, it was about community, about everyday people who chose to act, to care, and to keep hope alive in their city. What I ask is for every single one of you to possibly form your own patrol group. Know what's going on in your wards, because that's what your community is doing, not APD. Your citizens, your people, we're the ones looking out for each other, and you guys could be doing the exact same thing. I'm thankful to our mayor, I'm thankful to Mr. Larson, Mr. Nunez, and Casey as well. They're the ones that I see on the streets. They're the ones that I see trying to do something to help us, not up here passing laws, but being out there, making a difference. Each and every single one of you can form your own patrol group. Do something. Do what we're doing. Do what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. I'll ask the clerk to please read, well, first of all, is Jessie Olazaba?
I'm not here.
Okay, Jessie's not here. I'll ask clerk to please read the name of the next two people wishing off for public comment.
Ariel Vargas and Suri Avia.
Avila.
Avia. Is there Ariel Vargas? Okay, you're next. You can adjust the microphone. You have three minutes beginning now.
Okay, hi. I want to speak in Spanish because I know a lot of people who speak in Spanish. So she can speak English after me, so. Hola. Okay. Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Maleni Villanueva. Soy presidenta de Colibri Goals. Vengo a representar a la comunidad hispana, más que nada. Tengo...
Can you speak into the mic?
Yeah. Tengo una asociación que está inspirada en empoderar a la comunidad hispana. Nosotros, yeah.
Her name is?
Maleni Villanueva.
Maleni Villanueva, and she has an association that helps the community?
Yeah. The number, the name is Colibri Goals Association. So we're looking empoderar a la comunidad hispana. So nosotros lo único que vemos ahorita es el gran miedo y temor que existe. Yeah. Que nosotros vemos el miedo que hay en los miembros.
They see the fear that their members have?
Tienen temor hasta de asistir a las clases.
They're even scared to go to their classes.
Hemos tenido que cancelar diferentes eventos que teníamos planeados.
They've had to cancel planned events.
Y no hemos visto qué está haciendo Aurora por la comunidad.
And they haven't seen any measures that Aurora is doing for their community.
Lo que sí es que nosotros hemos asistido a ir a dar conocimiento de conocer tus derechos.
They have assisted people with learning their rights.
Que nos invitó la concejal Juanita Garza.
They were invited by Juanita Garza.
So yo he visto el compromiso que ella tiene también para la comunidad hispana.
So she has seen the commitment that she has for the community.
Y también, yo, de, ella nos ha apoyado mucho también en ir a dar pláticas también para que la gente se involucre más en dar a conocer todo lo que nosotros pagamos taxes. Nosotros también, la comunidad necesita un empuje.
They pay taxes. The community needs a push, and they need your help.
No necesitan esconderse.
They don't need you to hide.
No podemos seguir parando las clases. No podemos seguir viendo el temor en la gente.
They don't need to see people in fear. They don't need to see people continuing to skip their classes.
Porque no se está haciendo algo.
Because they're living through fear.
Gracias.
Thank you, Ms. Vargas. Two, three minutes has expired. Alas, clerk, please read the name of the next two people wishing off for public comment.
Suri Avia and Carlos Avia.
Welcome, Ms. Avia. You have three minutes beginning now.
Thank you so much. My name is Suri Avila. I am a Hispanic businesswoman here in Aurora, and I am here in front of you guys because besides of living in Aurora and having a business in Aurora, I am also an educator, director of All About Caring Childcare Center in Aurora. And I didn't want to talk this afternoon here, but we had a situation today where we were in danger. I am here talking with you guys as an educator and a director of childcare services. Today, ICE was a block away from our center, and we were in lockdown. So Mr. Avila and myself were patrolling the streets, trying to take care of the children and the families. Besides being parents living in Aurora, we have a compromise with those families. Myself, I will give my own life for any child that I take care of, no matter what color is their skin. We live in fear as educators. Today, we see the fear on each face of each child that was leaving our facility today and each family that's going in there and picking up their childrens today. As an educator, as a businessperson, as a neighbor living in here, we start living in fear, not because of us, it's because the children we take care of. So in here this afternoon, I ask each of you to pass this ordinance, to pass it because of the children, because of the families, and because of the protection we all need, because we can't do too much just patrolling in there and trying to take care of those children and those families, even with our own life every single day. This afternoon, I want each of you to look at All About Caring Childcare Center. We work with low-income families. We don't have a single family as a cash payer. We work with those hard-working families that need care for those childrens to go to work and to have a living in there. Please look at that childcare center that has been working in the city of Aurora for three years without asking anything to the city of Aurora until today, that we beg for protection. We beg for each of you to look at that center, to look at those children. Anyone or everyone is welcome to go and visit and see how we work.
Thank you, Ms. Avia.
Thank you.
Your time is finished. Thank you. I'll ask clerk to call the name of the next two people wishing off for public comment.
Carlos Avia and Paula Flores.
Ms. Flores, you can step up to the microphone. Mr. Avia, you have three minutes beginning now.
Good afternoon, everybody. On our way back to our daycare center, I did notice two trucks, and I did notice this guy running to our house, and that's when I pulled my camera, started recording what they were doing. They didn't pull any papers. They didn't ask nothing. Just grabbed the guy and put him in the truck. They look at me, and they smile. They were laughing. Okay? They were laughing. And they're still laughing at us. My blood was boiling. I'm capable of a lot of things. I went back to my daycare, locked down my daycare, okay? I take care of my parents and tell them what to do when they come call us. I have other businesses, call my guys too, be careful, not only because they might have documents, they might not, just because of the skin, because they are afraid to go out. I'm losing money. I'm losing businesses. I just need to see solutions. There's people maybe not working for you guys. They can have ideas and solutions. Use us. We can help. But it's time to do something. This is, this is getting out of hand, okay? Before something else happens, because already Chicago is doing more things than we're not supposed to be, we have to have strategies to do something better, to protect our community. That's all I have to say, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avia. Alas, clerk, to please call the name of the last two people wishing off for public comment.
Paula Flores and Jackie.
Sepeda?
Sepeda.
Okay. Ms. Flores, you have three minutes beginning now.
Good afternoon. I've had a very eventful day. I am with the Aurora Community Watch. Imagine me, 56-years-old, patrolling the west side and the east side, starting at 12:30 midnight. I get off of my unpaid job because I feel it's the right thing to do for my community at 6:00. What happens? Dispatch on our radio telling us there has been or is an abduction, abduction is being, happening on Sullivan Road. There I go. I'm gone. When I got there, the car was there. There were other patrolers that were already there. There were two that were closer than me. I got there, I waited for the car, behind the car that was, that the lady got abducted by. ICE showed up again, pulled behind one of the patrolers, was waiting to see who was gonna pick up the car. ICE found out that we were blowing our whistles and beeping our horns, and he took off. We had patrolers following them. We chased them out, or they chased them out of Aurora on 88. They came back, went back again. Another abduction on La Salle. We got there, we got all the information we needed of what kind of cars and who they were and everything. But what, my one question I have is, and I understand that this ordinance isn't gonna keep them out of Aurora. I understand that completely. We're not stupid. We know that. But it helps where people will not find them at. Do you see what I mean? On pub, on city property, if they are there, they need to be accounted for. We take pictures every day. We'll do it again. We take pictures of license plate, we take pictures of cars, we take videos when there's addictions. We do it all. Now, my one question for everybody right here, I know that I saw, that I saw personally, only one person, one person that I know personally that is with everybody here, one person, and it's nobody sitting on here, out patrolling today. What does that tell your constituents? What does that tell you?
Thank you, Ms. Flores. Three minutes has concluded. I'll ask clerk to please read the name of the last person wishing off for public comment.
Jackie is the last person.
Before everybody freaks out, I promise this is going in the right direction. So Ronald Reagan must stated, as a Republican president, that if we ever closed our door to new Americans, our leadership in this world would be lost. And immigration is what makes America great. But this doesn't feel very free, and this doesn't feel very great. This is not what greatness looks like. What's happening outside and what is happening in front of you is not great. I've seen it firsthand. I'm an emergency room nurse. I do not work in Aurora. I work in the city of Chicago. I also serve as a sexual assault nurse and a domestic violence nurse. I have firsthand seen in the hospital systems that people are not coming to the hospital because they are scared. And when they show up, they are critically ill, and they are ending up in my ICUs, or they are dying. A hospital that is supposed to be a sanctuary for people, and people are no longer coming in until they literally are on their deathbed. Children are not going to school and are missing out on an education. People are not going to grocery stores. People are scared at beacons of safety. We have seen the videos. It's happening. You can't deny it. It's in your face now. It's all over the internet. If you want to pretend it's not happening, then you're not looking, and you're not paying attention. A recent video circulated of a man being strangled, yelling, "I can't breathe." I'm sure that reminds you guys of something, how quickly we are to forget about what happened to George Floyd and where he died because he was strangled. So as a sexual assault nurse, I'm gonna teach you a strangulation fact. It takes 11 pounds of pressure to cut off blood flow to the neck and the brain, and causes temporary or permanent brain damage. In less than 30 seconds, brain death can occur, and in four to five minutes, you will most likely end up dead. Strangulation, we are seeing this in the videos. You stated earlier that you are inclined to pass this bill. There should be no inclination or no questions. There is no allegedly anymore that this is happening. This is what's happening before you, and as a community and as a person standing in front of you, I ask you to be brave, because this is scary for all of us. This was scary for us to come here. This is scary for us to stand in front of you and speak. But if you're not scared, then what are you doing? Stand up, be scared. Things that make you uncomfortable are the things that you should be doing. All of us showed up as a community, and this is what community looks like, to come speak to you when we could be having dinner, to speak up for our community. You see it. It's unsafe. So I'm asking you for everybody here, show us what community looks like. Stand up for us. Stand up for them. Stand up for all the people who couldn't be here tonight. Stand up. Do the right thing. There is no inclination. There is no allegedly.
Thank you. Your three minutes has concluded. This concludes the public comment portion of the agenda. There is no consent agenda. Next, we'll move to unfinished business. There's one item on the agenda. I'll ask the clerk to please read the first item under unfinished business.
250898, an ordinance restricting the use of city Aurora property for civil immigration enforcement activities. So moved.
Second. First, we need first a motion to suspend the rules to consider this item at this special council meeting. Motion was made by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Masiacos.
Yes.
Nunez.
Yes.
Franco.
Yes.
Seville.
Yes.
Vanuelos.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bug. I saw a yes. Larson.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no.
Okay. The rules are suspended. Is there a motion to approve item 250898? Motion made by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderman Seville. Are there any questions or discussions regarding the ordinance? Alderman Larson.
Thank you. Yeah, so I have a couple of amendments prepared. I will pass out hard copies of my first version. This is what I presented with a few minor changes, what I presented at the RAP committee meeting last week. I can read it into the record unless we want to get a second first.
Does everybody have a copy? Okay. I guess I'll ask the, Alderman, if you want to make a motion to approve the items in red on this agenda item, and if there's a second.
Yes, I will make a motion. Should I read the changes?
You need to have them read it all. You can just make a motion to support the long version.
Yes.
And the changes would be the items made in red that have you distributed.
Yes, I will make a motion to approve the long version that I just handed out that is labeled the November 7th RAP plus the Larson amendment.
Is there a second? If there's no second, this amendment dies.
Okay. If I still have the floor, I would like to propose a shorter version of this amendment, which I will pass out now. This one is two sentences added. I can read that into the record once I have it passed out. So while we're passing that out, I would like to make a motion to propose the short version of the 11-7 plus Larson amendment, amendment, which I will read. This is in addition to Section 40-3 documentation. It's adding a Part C that reads as follows. This SOP shall include protocols for documenting the identity of anyone performing civil immigration enforcement on city-owned property if reasonably possible. The documentation shall include the name or names and/or badge number or badge numbers, or whether the person or persons in question refuse to provide this information.
Second.
There's motion on table. There's a second by Alderman White. First, did you want to make a statement as to what, the rationale behind your amendment?
Yes, so this is a shorter version of what I proposed earlier, which had a number of items that civilians, and just as ICE has been doing illegally against federal, federal court orders, they are refusing to identify themselves, and... And I think it's important that we are making sure that those who are taking our neighbors off the streets are actually law enforcement, and that those people will at least have some sort of tracking mechanism and are not being kidnapped by bad actors.
Discussions, questions, or comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Seville.
So in the amendment, Alderman Larson, you say in there, if reasonably possible, I wanna ask the attorney this, isn't this amendment kind of redundant, what's already included in the, in the last version that came out of the RAP committee to, to have the, the place of our employees report as much information as possible in their reports?
So, I, I think this is kinda getting in the weeds a bit. The, what came out of the RAP committee and the amendment from last week's meeting is part B, which just states the Aurora Police Department shall adopt standard operating procedures to document violations of this chapter when sworn officers are on duty, observe such violations. C expands on that, I think that that's something, you know, I think that the police department can, can draft their own operating procedures, but, you know, it's, it's, you're, you're getting into, you know, the specifics here require the police to interact and, and, you know, push for more information. I don't know that that's, you know, that they have their own report writing procedures, they have their own protocols, and this is requiring it to be outlined in ordinance rather than in the policies and procedures of their department, which is unique, we typically don't do this in ordinances.
I'm sorry, could you say that again? Which is why?
So, so we typically don't include SOPs in our, in our ordinances, that's, this would be unique. We, we typically leave, you know, the, the ordinances set, set policies, and the details of how they're, how they're worked out and enacted are, are left up to, to staff, to, to department heads. The police have some very robust policies, I know that Chief Thomas is here, if you, if you have specific questions about report writing and how that happens. But they have very robust policies about report writing, and I think this is, you know, it's, it's, it's putting something that's typically a procedural, or, or a policy, you know, something that's in a training bulletin or a policy and procedure of the police department, and making it into an ordinance.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Alderman Nunez?
I wasn't, I don't sit on the RAP committee, but I did attend the last meeting, and I recall, actually kept the report that Chief Thomas shared with us, it's the eleven-page report, and if I recall correctly, I believe Chairman Bug asked the question regarding interacting with other, other law enforcement bodies, and whether or not that information, badge number and everything is requested. And if I recall correctly, the chief did say it is put in the narrative section. So I just wanted to share that for those colleagues of mine that weren't at RAP, that that was covered during that meeting, so.
Any other comments or questions?
Did the chief wanna address this one more time?
Hello, Matt Thomas. Yeah, so like I mentioned in rap, we, we don't have any concerns with the framework of this. I think when, when you get into operationalizing it, into policy, that lives within the police department, we, we can document the name if we have it, we have other responsibilities on scene to preserve the peace, and I won't, wouldn't want my officers to get distracted from that. But as far as the framework of this goes, we don't have a problem with it. I think it's when we get into the protocol and the policy procedure, the, you know, the oversight of that, that belongs in our policy.
And the information that's laid out, you would be compiling as much information as possible during the moment, right?
Yeah.
It's not that you wouldn't leave anything out?
No, the, the report preparation policy says, any, any information that they have, that they've obtained, you know, by witness statements through their observations, to include in the, in the report. And then there's a layer of review for a, from a supervisor for accountability there. You know, there are a lot of times there's mitigating factors at, at the scene, but, so that's why it needs to live in the policy, because the supervisors will take a peek at that and, and decide whether or not, you know, that there was other priorities at the scenes such as preserving the peace and they couldn't get the information, or they, there was a peaceful situation and they, they had an opportunity to get those names and badge numbers, and then they'll include that in the report.
Okay, thank you.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yeah, just to clarify, Chief, with the ordinance as we were handed today, which I know you have seen, the portion that is just being presented to a C, it appears to me, from what I'm hearing, and I wasn't in RAP committee last, special committee last week, this is something you're already doing, and it's not something that necessarily should be mandated in an ordinance. Is that correct?
Let me make sure I'm reading the same C as you.
The one, did you get the one that was just handed to us? I don't know, this is, this is what happens, these get muddied up as we're sitting here, and it'd be nice to just get one of these passed. It's a PSO, which legal said is not typically in.
SOP.
SOP, PSO, I got the right, I got the right letters.
I did not call it that.
Sorry.
Yeah, I think, I think there's, you know, B would cover it. I think that, that amendment would cover it right there, that, that section would cover it. C, I haven't had a chance to discuss it with Alderman Larson, but the, if reasonably possible, you know, I, I would go back to what I said before, right now the supervisor is the one that determines reasonably possible, right? Because there's mitigating factors there, they have, they look at the totality of the circumstances, they might get to a scene, it might be a chaotic scene, and they might not get an opportunity to get names and badge numbers because they're preserving the peace. So what I would, I would caution is that, that C, that, that would be my question there, if reasonably possible. I think that for, for us, we can adopt the SOP, we can work with, you know, mayor and anyone, the Alderman, as far as what's included in that SOP, but we do that often anyway as far as creating training bulletins to say, okay, this is, we're going to document this, and this is, when, when it's practical, you go ahead and document it in this manner, so.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes, Chief, can you speak to, as you did at the RAP committee, you did a good job explaining the, the training involved for writing reports and the review process and the detail, that the level of detail goes in there, that goes in there, and why is that done?
Right, so for us, you know, we, we're already drafting a training bulletin right now, as, as, you know, we enact a new ordinance, if there's, you know, the report preparation is nothing new. The, when a new ordinance comes out, or something, a law comes out, we'll put out a training bulletin to our officers so they know what the expectations are for them when they get on scene and how to document. Once they document the, you guys have all got a copy of the incident report, once they document that in the incident report, there's a portion in there for a narrative, for them to fill in their observations, what they've seen, heard, and then it goes through a level of review with the supervisor, and he looks at it to determine if, you know, all the, all the pertinent information was included. Lot of times that gets sent back, and if an officer omitted some information unintentionally, you know, they, they might forget to add some information, and then there's some accountability there, and, and we can handle it that way. That's how it works for all the other ordinances, I mean, up to our most serious crime of a homicide, it doesn't tell them what to include in a homicide report. They, they document the homicide report, and then it goes into a, into a level of review with the supervisor, so.
Any other questions, comments from the Alderman who haven't had an opportunity to speak on this motion? Alderman Larson, did you have your?
Yeah, I just wanted to provide a little bit of extra context. From Friday at the special RAP committee, there were a couple of amendments, one for the signage, and one adding some language about city employees not making reports if they're currently in danger, you know, to get out of this situation, and that reports can be made, made anonymously. Something that was brought up in the rationality for that is that in the presentation that was provided by the mayor's office, it mentioned that employees should take these steps as soon as practical without endangering themselves or others, and that language was added here. So I see that as a way of adding, adding some language to an ordinance that is determining what the policies should be that are adopted by the mayor's office and their training. And I think this is a similar thing, just to a different department.
Any other questions from the council? Alderman Bug, I'm not sure if you can hear us, or if you had anything to add? Well, we can't hear him.
I think he sounds good.
Okay. There's no further questions, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll on just the amendment, so we're just voting on the amendment, and.
Just the amendment.
So, correct? So the, the first motion we're voting on is just the amendment, and then if that passes or fails, we'll continue with the whole ordinance.
Barrero?
No.
Garza?
No.
Masiacos?
No.
Nunez?
No.
Franco?
No.
Seville?
No.
Vanuelos?
No.
Smith?
No.
Bug?
Couldn't see your, we couldn't see your mouth at all. Says no.
No, no.
Larson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Two yes, nine no.
Okay, motion on the amendment fails. Currently before is the original ordinance, which has made its way through RAP committee twice in COW. Are there any further amendments or discussion on this agenda item before we call the roll? Alderwoman Smith?
Don't have an amendment, I do have a couple of questions, I would be more directed towards legal. First of all, what I'd like to say is, when we take this oath of office, it's our duty to protect and to serve our residents, and that's what we're doing up here, that's what we've been trying to do, and it's taking longer, you know, than, than, than those of you who are out there have liked, but that is exactly what we're doing today. Sometimes, you know, we have to know what we're signing, we have to know what we're getting involved in, so as we make these decisions, you know, it's very important for us to know what each and every word means. I support this. I support this because I support the residents, I don't support this through any demands or any threats, I'm supporting this because it's the right thing to do for the people of Aurora. But my question would lead, and you may not be able to answer this, attorney, because of the way we have it set up for our employees, that it's mandatory for them to, to document and go forward, it's a two-part question. What happens in the long run, this is meant to put documentation together in case there's a legal suit later on, and, which would be a federal legal suit. If we have an employee that's caught up into that legal suit, are we going to support that employee legally, and are we gonna support them through the necessary time that they have off? And then secondly, I believe it's already in there, what happens if an employee is endangered or something happens to them while they're in the process? Are we gonna take the steps to care for them?
So there's, I'm gonna answer the first question, and then we can talk about the second. The first question, this was, this was discussed quite a bit at RAP. We provide legal services and advice to employees anytime they are subpoenaed in court for any matter. So if our employees witness a car accident, you know, while they're on duty, and then they're subpoenaed, or if they're in a car accident, that happens more than, more than we'd like, right? Is my mic not on? Oh, sorry. I, I'm trying to make sure that I'm, I'm talking to everyone. But, you know, if our, if our employees are involved in some sort, you know, even, even some sort of public works thing, some sort of trip and fall or something, and, you know, the, you know, there's a case later on, and our, you know, the guy that went out there and put the, you know, hazard cones up or whatever, is called as a witness, our office provides the support for that, okay? This would be the same thing. So to the extent that they are acting under the scope of their employment, we would then provide the legal services for their, you know, as a witness. It, it's not, I, I just wanna, you know, I just wanna kind of clarify that it's not, it's not any different than what we do for any, any employee who's subpoenaed to testify in a criminal matter or in a civil matter. That's, that's something that our office does regularly, okay?
And I would assume the same for the, if there was an incident, an accident, something that they were harmed, same thing would happen?
Well, as for, if you're, if you're asking like if they were physically harmed, so that's, I think that's a different issue, because there's, there's different laws involving with, you know, sort of the workman comp issue, so, so, yes, there are protections, it's a little more complicated than, do I just, you know, provide support for them while they're testifying? Because we do have a claims process, we have, you know, insurance agreements, et cetera, that kick in if an employee is hurt while on our property, while doing their job, while, you know, in the scope of their employment. By passing this ordinance, this makes it within the scope of their employment to do this reporting, so, you know, I, I don't wanna opine on individual circumstances, because I don't know what, you know, what will come up, but that type of thing is, you know, it's, it would be similar to someone, you know, going to the copy room and tripping and falling, you know, it'd be the same type of circumstances.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying that, yes, thanks so much.
Any other questions or comments before we cast vote? Alderman Barrero?
Yes, just wanted to make a few comments to the audience. Just wanted to say that we see you, we hear you, we've heard you, we've heard from over sixty people on this matter, and just wanna say that we appreciate you being the voices for those that can't be here. We appreciate you sharing the stories of what's been happening in our community. Our community has been affected, we see it. We go to events, we see the attendance is down, we, we know businesses are hurting, people aren't going to restaurants and other things. We know, we know that's true. You know, so this is not a perfect ordinance, it's been amended, many amendments in here, the Seville amendment, the Babe Bug amendment, the Garza amendment, a lot of amendments, we have had Alderman, just wanna make sure we get it right. I understand people are impatient, and they want us to act quickly, but I wanna commend the, the mayor's office for getting this together quickly, and also for Chairman Bug for calling a, a special RAP committee. We met, we met on Tuesday, and we had a RAP committee on Friday last week. We met for three hours to get, to, to listen to people and to also discuss the ordinance in depth and detail. And then we had a special meeting tonight, thanks to the mayor's office, clerk, and every, for putting that together. So, we're ready to vote on this. More importantly, you know, a yes vote is that we're supporting the community, it's the right thing to do. I just wanna make sure that people understand what this does and what this doesn't do. We don't want false, a, a, a false sense of security from our community. They still need to be safe, and continue doing what they're doing to be safe. So just be careful with that, and to the media as well, when you put this out there, be, you know, make sure that it talks about what this ordinance does. And so, thank you for being the voices, and we, we see you and hear you. Thank you.
Alderman Seville?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I too wanna say thank you to all of you for coming out, not only tonight, but last Tuesday as well. I think it's really important to have strong voices like yours being advocated in our community, and we thank you for all the work that you're doing on behalf of everyone in the community, everyone in the city of Aurora. So I'm in favor of this ordinance, I think it's necessary. I think we need to do all we can to help our constituents. It's not everything, of course, but it's something, it's a start, and we need to do as much as we can, and that's why we have these amendments, because we want to make it the strongest ordinance that we can, to make sure people are protected, and what we want is actually approved and adopted by the city council. So I just wanna say thank you. Again, I'm gonna be voting in favor of this tonight.
Any other members of the council, make comment or any further questions? Alderwoman Garza?
Yes, I just wanna say thank you. I know this is time, a hard time, what we're facing now, so now, I receive so much bad and good comments, but I hope I understand why I return the, the ordinance for rap, because we need to clarify. why I return the, the ordinance for RAP, because we need to clarify everything what we're discussing. Like they say, last week on Friday, we stayed three hours to finalize, and finally, we are agreeing almost in everything what we put it in this ordinance. And it's something. We can start with something with this. So now I feel more and more comfortable. After all these discussions we have, I feel more comfortable to vote yes. Thank you for being here, and thank you for being patient. But are we feeling what you guys feeling also? Understand that. This is very difficult time for Latinos, and not only Latinos, but it's most for us, like Mexicans. So this is a hard time, so we have to survive, and we have to still fighting, and we have to still be alert, okay? Thank you.
Alderman Larson?
Thank you. Yeah, I also want to make a couple of comments. Of course, I will be supporting this ordinance, however, on the condition that it's the first step. As many others have pointed out, this is not going to solve the problem right away. In fact, it's mostly just following what other municipalities, mainly smaller municipalities than Aurora, have done. So, you know, this is the first step of many, and I think it, going forward, I don't know exactly what the next steps are going to be, but I do know that as the second largest city in one of the largest metropolitan areas in the country, we need to be a leader, and we need to be working with neighboring municipalities, because we are much stronger in numbers. What we know is that ICE is not in Aurora every single day. There are some days where they're in other municipalities. It's because they don't have the numbers to target all of us. If we act by ourselves, then they can target us, they can hurt our people. But if we all work together, then we outnumber them, and we need to, we need to be creative about what the next steps are going to be if we hope to stop this, and we really do need to stop this, because we're going down a very dark path. It's...
Any other comments from the council before we move to a vote? I'll just wrap up real quick, and, and also thank city staff, especially the legal department, that's worked tirelessly to work with the alderpeople on their numerous amendments. Alderman Bug, thank you for calling a special RAP meeting to accelerate this on behalf of the community and the council. And, you know, I also want to reiterate, as I did in many interviews that I have, that this is not a silver bullet. It should not make people get a false sense of security about being on city property, but it does give us one more tool. And what I think more importantly, it, it says that we here at the Aurora City Council and your local form of government are standing with the community. With that being said, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll on the amendment that came forward from the RAP Committee in its original form.
Barrero?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Masiacos?
Yes.
Nunez?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Seville?
Yes.
Benuelos?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bug?
It was a yes.
Larson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero no.
Motion carries. This ordinance is adopted. New business. We have one item under new business. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to consider items under new business?
So moved.
Second motion made by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderman Franco. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Barrero?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Masiacos?
Yes.
Nunez?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Seville?
Yes.
Benuelos?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bug? Yes. Larson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Eleven yes, zero no.
Will the clerk please read the first item of new business?
250933, a resolution authorizing the execution of a lease agreement with Illinois workers in action for space at 5 South Broadway Avenue in Aurora.
Samud.
Motion made by Alderwoman Smith, second, I'm sorry, motion made by Alderwoman Garza, seconded by Alderwoman Smith. Comments, questions, or do we want to just go right to staff presentation? Do you have something ready?
We have a staff presentation.
Yep. If you could just give us a quick presentation.
Can I ask a question while she's coming up there?
Sure.
Why was this not going through BZE?
Uh, once, this is what I brought up at the Tuesday council meeting, just to make the alderman aware. Secondly, is just for the essence of time, they've already been working here in the city of Aurora. All this does is give them a space, and the chief of staff will go over sort of the process, as we've been trying to work with legal and their entity to create more of a presence, to handle some of the things that the administration is currently dealing with with respect to ICE.
Well, the reason I, I have to say, the reason I ask this, because we have a number of things that are skipping the process, a, a number of things recently. Some of them were time-sensitive, some were not. I don't know that this one is. Not that it's a bad idea at all, but I just want to make sure that going forward, we have protocol and process that we follow, and as we saw with this last resolu, or this last ordinance, better when it's at the committee stage to get, iron out the works as opposed to moving on to the end. So I just hope that this is not something we're going to keep seeing in the future, because I, it's, it's really disturbing that we're not using our normal protocol.
It was disturbing to me when the previous mayor brought four to $5 million blank check to the Alliance, so.
Now, you want to change the subject, you can, but that's not your message.
I'll ask the chief's staff to make the presentation. Thank you.
So, the Illinois Workers in Action is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, was established in 2021, empowerment through education policy and labor rights, a mission to empower workers through education, organizing policy, solidarity, worker power, develop leadership in the workplace, and offer resources to families in the community. As we met with Illinois Workers in Action, they were very interested in helping specifically with immigration-related issues, as they've really kind of shifted their focus due to what is happening in our communities, to immigration, legal aid, as well as a variety of immigration-related issues. They still, of course, do help people in the workplace who might be exploited for a variety of reasons, helping them go through due process as well. But this access to services, they have funding from the state of Illinois to pay for legal aid, to allow people to have appointments with attorneys, and that's one of the things they're offering here in the city of Aurora. Their next closest office is in Bulling Brook, and it makes it difficult for people in Aurora to access those services. We would like, you know, these are some of the things that they offer. When it says visa and immigration assistance, it could be a U visa if there's fleeing domestic violence, for example, or something, you know, that sort of application. These are really complicated bureaucratic processes, and not only when you're maybe learning a new language and in a new place, having someone that can kind of hold your hand through that process is important. It can be overwhelming, especially at a time where it is dangerous to even be in our streets. So this, they provide all of these services free of charge. There would be no cost to the city as far as them using, you know, as far as using the space, they are paying a, a small rental fee. In our space, it'd be at 5 South Broadway. We already have rentals in that building, so it would be, some of our community engagement is in that area, as well as special events, and some other community services folks are in that building as well. And I think it's important that especially detainee and deportation defense, they have access to that, as we're seeing that a lot in our communities on a regular basis. As I, I think I mentioned earlier, our Public Transition Committee, our Public Safety One, asked for us to create a Department of Immigrant and Refugee Rights. Due to the current budget status, that was just not attainable for us to hire a bunch of new people, create a new program. But finding ways for us to kind of offer these services, especially around that legal aid services, Know Your Rights trainings, which they do offer, they offer trainings to employers and small businesses as well, was really important, to find a way to do that that doesn't have a cost to the city at this point, and this was a great partnership, and we felt really positive about our way to make that happen without the city incurring extra costs. This is a six-month contract, as we know that there may be a, depending on their operations and how things are moving in our country right now, we wanted to kind of provide the short term, make sure the space works for them. If they need, depending on how many people show up to trainings and things like that, they may need access to, like, our conference rooms, things like that. But, but for the most part, they'll be in one singular office, and then have access to a conference room in this building, and some other joint, shared, common areas. Sorry, financial impact here, I, I sort of went off script here, but this is the ask, and this is what we hope to do. We're in a, you know, as we've heard tonight, and as you, many of you expressed, we're in a unique situation right now in our community. This is just one of the ways we're trying to answer the community's ask to us and demand for us to provide more resources to our community.
Be happy to take any questions. And I did introduce myself for the record, Shannon Cameron, Chief of Staff. Apologies.
Any questions from the council? Alderman Nunez?
Appreciate the information, and I want to thank IWA for offering these services to our community when we need it. My question is, during the Know Your Rights trainings, we, several of sat through the roundtables with businesses and all the other meetings around the topic that we're addressing tonight, there was a, a strong concern around the community not coming out for obvious reasons. So has IWA, if someone from IWA is here, have, have they offered alternatives to connecting with those that want to use these resources so we can make sure that the community is impacted on the larger scale?
So they typically, when they do trainings and things like that, they don't do a public announcement of exactly where they're happening to protect people's safety. So they have people register, and they send out the location a certain amount of hours right prior to that. So they have, of course, thought through that. As far as things like Zoom or other digital virtual visits with attorneys, that sometimes can be arranged, but I think it's difficult. They typically want to meet in person, because there's paperwork that needs to be seen and addressed and discussed, so it's, but they are continually trying to find new ways to meet the needs of the community. But, you know, we're in a public forum, we had to say the address, right? But the, the hope is that we're not blasting that everywhere to protect our community.
I appreciate that. Again, it's just I want to make sure that the community can get the most out of these services, which is why I ask. So I appreciate you sharing that.
Do you two want to step up and introduce yourselves?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jocelyn Escalona, and I'm currently the Outreach Coordinator for Illinois Workers in Action.
Thanks. Any further questions for Chief of Staff, for me, for IWA?
Mayor Larson.
Alderwoman Garza, then Alderman White.
Ah, yes, my question is, is totally free, right? I'm saying if they need to make a, a letter, notify letter, to some people want to make sure where they want to leave the kids in case they're going to be arrested, so they can alert us, everything, want to be free?
Okay, yes. As Chief of Staff Shannon Cameron mentioned, all of our services are completely free to the community. Our funders, just to be a little bit more specific, are Illinois Access to Justice, the Illinois Department of Human Services, and the Chicago Region Food System Fund, and all these funds go directly to support our community efforts. So, no, they would not have to pay. We would connect them via referrals, as well as we are able to drive them out to these appointments, so they don't have to put themselves at risk. We will also drive them back home.
This is great, yeah, because some, right now, a lot of offices are legal offices, so they abuse a lot our community. They're charging so much, just for a small letter, or, no, and sometimes they need to find out what is the people they be arrested, and they're looking for, and they're charging almost $5,000, $7,000. I can't believe it.
Um, I would like to let you guys know, as the mayor did say, we have been working here in the Aurora community. I, myself, have been working directly with families who have been impacted, have been loved ones detained, and we are able to help them out in various ways. And again, 100% for free.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman White?
Yes, I just have a, two maybe, but one general question, and Ms. Cameron. So, all lease agreements that the city enters into come before council?
Um, as far as I know, yes.
Yeah, okay. Didn't know that. And then second, if you, if you're not currently here, where are you currently based?
Uh, so I currently live in the city of Aurora. That's how I'm able to help out so many people here locally. But our, as Chief of Staff said, our closest office is in Bulling Brook, so I do have to drive out there sometimes. But again, I make myself as accessible as possible. It is my job to make sure that I'm able to provide and keep my community safe. So again, if I have to do a home visit, I will do a home visit.
That being said, they specifically hired some new people to serve Aurora, and that was after our conversation, because they know that there's a huge need in Aurora, and they had been hurt, that, you know, a lot of people have been asking. We get, we get questions at our office, in the mayor's office, all the time about legal aid, and we just don't have, we have a few great resources here, but not enough to meet the need right now. So they hired up in order to staff this office.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Alderman Seville?
Yes, and do you, for a chance, provide information that we, as the city council and the aldermen, can distribute to our constituents, and I would assume both Spanish and English, and?
Yes, definitely. So all of our flyers are bilingual. They're in English and Spanish. We have a services flyer that explains everything in depth of what we do. We also have Know Your Rights information. We have letter size. We also have wallet size. We also are currently helping distribute whistles, like the whistle kits around the community. We are also able to provide businesses with all of the resources that they need in order to be ready in case anything unforeseen were to happen, as well as provide them for you guys in order to continue to spread the word and keep our community safe. Perfect.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay. Hearing under's been a motion and a second. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll on agenda item 250933, which is a simple contract between IWA and the city of Aurora.
Barrero?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Masiacos?
Yes.
Nunez?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Seville?
Yes.
Benuelos?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bug? Doesn't look like he's with us.
Record reflect that Alderman Bug has left the meeting.
Larson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Ten yes, zero no.
Motion carries. This resolution is approved. There is no need for a closed session. Motion to adjourn by Alderman Franco, seconded by Alderwoman Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned at 6:08 PM. Thank you.